Okay, it's two o'clock and we're gonna call the study session to order. And who's on first? Martha, is it you?
We're doubling up study sessions for foreseeable future, so Martha has about the first thirty minutes and then we'll turn it over to development services.
A requirement for our violation on the lily was to complete an EPA supplemental project with Jerry Ivy Pond, particularly to the pond.
Okay, back up to what you first said, a supplemental condition.
Yeah, we keep forgetting that Rod's...
Supplemental environmental project, which means we can do a project in our community that has nothing to do with our fine and use that towards our fund.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing. We had an exceedance of molybdenum, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Molybdenum.
Content at the sewer plant effluent that was land applied.
Okay.
And because of that, then we entered into this agreement.
We have to do some kind of compensatory project.
Yeah, and they won't let you spend the agreed-upon amount to fix the solution that was the violation. You have to do something else that's beneficial in the community, separate and distinct from solving your problem.
Okay, that explains why the EPA is involved in this bond.
Yes.
All right, I was struggling with that.
Right, it's funny, I pulled that out, I should have forwarded that to you this weekend. But our fine, our potential fine that we were facing was somewhere around $260,000 from the EPA if we went with paying the fine option, right? Two fifty-seven, two sixty?
No, if we worked with them and came to an agreement and didn't fight the fine, it would have been roughly seventy-five thousand.
Okay, okay.
So we paid fifteen thousand and then an additional sixty thousand towards the project, but it could be something less than that.
Okay, that was the maximum that they could have assessed, but opted not to. Okay, gotcha.
Since we agreed, we are at the lower numbers and hopefully we'll be able to complete the project. As we were looking, Parks and Rec and myself were looking at how we might drain the pond, we became very concerned about the wall condition out there around the pond. And so we have about thirty minutes to get through this presentation. So we're gonna try to move through the pictures and the information fairly quickly because we really want to give you a chance to ask questions at the end and get some guidance on your thoughts for our path forward. So we'll start with, and let Rick Martin, the park supervisor, provide you some information on how the pond was constructed and what we see is the current condition of the pond. Hopefully the pictures you had a chance to look at will help you. And then I'll wrap up with kind of some wall failure scenarios and try to get some input with your thoughts after that.
Mayor, commissioners? So moving forward, the pond was constructed in 1997. You can see it's a rather small body water, .83 acres, really shallow, two and a half feet on the edges and approximately five foot deep towards the middle. Now, of course, we know that since 1997, there's probably been a lot of muck in the bottom. We'll just leave it at that for lack of a better term. And the water that we use to refill this is irrigation well that's onsite right next to the pond. And then we do get some surface rain each during high amounts of rain. And there's approximately eight hundred linear feet of wall currently. Then we get into the excavation, how the pond was built. It was a contractor came in and did the dirt work, you see here. And this is just kind of a cross-section of the pond itself, showing you the edges and the approximate depth towards the middle. And the walls were made out of a kind of a sackcrete, quickcrete type. These were specially made sacks. They don't, most quickcrete has a plastic liner to help keep the quickcrete in the bag from getting moist and getting wet. These are just the opposite. We wanted, they wanted them to get wet, so they didn't have the plastic liner on them. All of these bags, you can't really see it here, but there's rebar that drives, you just drive a rebar stake through individual bags to help tie everything together. So kind of staggered in amongst all this is rebar that holds it together. Then in 2008, and this was during a large rain event, you can see where the wall kind of pulled away from the sidewalk. So the repair cost was fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. And this was, like I said, back in nineteen, or 2008. And this was only ninety linear feet of failure at this time. And here it just shows a little bit of what the bags look like right now. If, in the far, the upper left corner, it's kind of hard to see in this picture, but you can see some metal plates up in here. And that's where that wall failure was back in 2008. And that's where just, they went in and pulled it back to try and help keep it from completely falling in. And again, just more pictures of the sacks. You can see how they're deteriorating. And a lot of this is just from being wet all the time and then freezing and thawing that we get throughout the different years. It really, once you get a crack in there and you get the freezing thawing action, it just really speeds up that process. And then on the edge of the pond, you can see where some of the top layer of the sacks have deteriorated enough and fallen off. And when this has happened, like I said, we used rebar, or they used rebar to put it together. So those rebar cut off, just we don't have exposed rebar. And another picture. And then we have a lot more of a failure. This is the kind of on the southeast corner, adjacent to the gazebo over there. And just more of the same thing. And you can kind of see, this whole process continues throughout the whole pond and the wall. Unfortunately, because of the crystal-clear nature of the pond, you know, we can't, that's a joke by the way.
I was like, what pond are you?
We can't see below the surface to see really what the rest of that looks like. And since it was built, it really never has been completely drained down, cleaned out, and refilled. It's just one of those processes throughout the year. As evaporation occurs, waters gets out, we just turn the well back on and refill it back up to maximum height. And just another kind of cross-section of what the walls look like. And then we go back to more of the nuts and bolts with Martha and the rest of her story.
This is somewhere, I was gonna talk a little bit about the environmental project. The intent was to do some work that would alleviate the harmful algae blooms that we've had out there. The last two years, we've had to put up signage and notify that we had either a watch or a warning. And Rick talked about the color of the water. That dark green is really what you see out there. Those were current photos even in, just early in the year, where it's already started to turn green and has a kind of a distinct color to it that I'm sure we'll be fighting that same issue again this summer. So this describes the project that we were gonna do in lieu of paying our fine and the $60,000. The first item was to pump the pond down to the toe wall and leave the bottom wet. Well, as we started looking at the wall, we got concerned about that. Thought it would be more prudent to let you know about that in advance instead of coming after the fact and saying, "My $60,000 project turned into a quarter of a million-plus project." So we wanted to get some thoughts from you in advance. And Parks and Rec has a master plan. And that plan identified improving the water chemistry and circulation to the pond and removing the scum and algae. And it notes that the pond edge needs to be rebuilt. So it's something that Parks and Rec has had identified for some time. And then this page comes from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and it was identified with deferred maintenance. And again, there's about $500,000 annually that's put into place for capital improvement projects. And I kind of highlighted the Jerry Ivy Pond mix and does not have a water recirculation feature. The water stays green from all the duck and goose fecal matter and food that visitors feed them. And it was, Parks Division rated this as poor to very poor and noted $500,000 for that issue. And a second step that the Parks and Recreation Group did was created a CIP priority model, a list of projects. This project ranked twenty-two out of 187. Its score was 38.8. And the highest score in that ranking was 42.6 and the lowest was 20.8. So the condition of the Jerry Ivy Pond and the harmful algae bloom in the walls is something that's, you know, been on the radar screen and noted as a potential issue at some point in time. So we've looked at three scenarios, just kind of a quick look-through of what we might see or what we could do. And we identified a wall failure, which would require us to replace a wall. Obviously, it'd look much better. It'd eliminate future maintenance and probably alleviate some safety issues that we have out there. The disadvantage is cost. We don't replace a wall. Well, that alleviates the cost of a new wall, but, you know, might leave you one option that's not as favorable to you fill the pond in. And then if you do, is this still a destination park? What would the public think of that? And those are all things that we'd like to hear some of your thoughts on. The second was a partial wall failure. We did a lot of talking about this amongst ourselves and we also reviewed it with one of the local contractors. And we put it down as a possibility, but we really don't know if it's even, without seeing it drained, if it's possible, how we would tie existing to new. And then wouldn't we be just waiting for the next half to, next portion to fail? So we might be throwing good money away. Because we don't know how much of the wall will fail or what portions of it when we get to it. But we don't know if it's even possible, but we threw it out as an option to give you some ideas. And then if there's no wall failure, well, obviously, we wouldn't have to have the cost of replacing the wall, but kind of the disadvantage is it's still gonna look like what you saw. And the real question is not if it fails, but when? Because we're seeing some severe failure in some of those areas. And obviously, there's some safety concerns when those edges start crumbling and are loose and have rebar in certain locations that could protrude out of it. So those were kind of a real quick look at that. And so here's what we did with costs. I developed costs, just looking at a concrete wall with footing on the bottom, similar to the picture. Came up with a cost of about $300 a linear foot. Asked Mr. Coatz to do one. He's more thorough than I, because he added in some underdrained piping and some rock. He came up with $400 a linear foot. And then our local contractor gave us an estimate of $300,000 to replace a wall. And he was looking at a three-foot-tall wall with a four-foot-eight-inch bottom and underdrained pipes. His number for that was 300,000. And then the items that I say does not include was replacing sidewalk. We know some sidewalk will need replaced as a part of this project. Their question of handrail came up. I think the logic along the shallow edges is to avoid the handrail, but we need to review that. And then the other option was the betonite seal in the bottom of the pond, which we need to do. And we could fix some other issues with the pond. We could put in a drain pipe and make it much easier to drain and some other functions and features as we do the rest of the work we have planned. Some additional features that Parks and Rec have, it'd be much easier to do with the pond drained and the idea that we were gonna reseal the bottom. We didn't include any costs for any special finishes that you could put on the wall. Just trying to give you the basic numbers here.
Does this include removing the old wall?
Yes.
Okay.
We think that'll be fairly simple.
It'll do itself.
It's hauling it off, but it does include that, Rod. So no special finishes. So really, that's kind of the idea of our presentation. And we'd be glad to answer any questions you have. Our real idea was to bring it back to you and get your concerns and thoughts and any additional work that you'd like us to do before we make this path forward.
Is it better not to seal, something you just do completely over again over top of the other?
It's a, it would, and what you would need to do was mix up the bottom of the pond. We'd be scraping some of the sediment that's laden with phosphorus and nitrogen out. We feel we could damage that, so we'd be excavating it, stirring it up, and then adding the betonite. I think this had about a six-inch betonite seal in it, so we'd be, and we would do the entire bottom just to ensure that we got it sealed.
How do you define failure and how much of it is there to fix that's failed? As opposed to the entire thing?
On the wall?
Yeah.
That's where we say it's kind of hard to decide till we drain it and really see what happens. We know that there's a lot of areas, when you walk around it and just look at the wall, that's in pretty poor shape. In talking with the contractor, we felt it was gonna be very difficult to try to find a way to put new bags in there and tie it to what's there and then wait for that. So to be honest with you, we didn't get a strong feeling about that was a good option to move forward with. It's really kind of putting a Band-Aid on the project and just waiting for the remainder to fall in. So failure to me is if the top portion of the wall or a whole section of the wall in multiple locations would fail. But we didn't talk about it number of feet. We just kind of tried to give that as an option until we see what happens.
What's our timeline for meeting the EPA's spending of our $60,000 that we still have left?
I've already talked to EPA and told them that I have a concern with the wall and that we might want to delay some of the work and they're fine with that. Because they'd rather have us do a project that's gonna stay in place and to have something that's gonna fail shortly after we do the work.
And again, living out in that area, there's, it's an asset, but it's a liability. And when I say liability, the amount of geese that are out there and trying to walk around it with strollers or young kids is a little bit of an issue. And I'm not sure if you, if you made the footprint of the pond, half of what it is, you would reduce your cost of redoing the wall in half approximately, except you'd have to pay for filter and all that, compaction and stuff. But is that something that has been talked about at the Parks and Rec Eric level?
No, we haven't.
And just to build on, you were thinking along the same lines that I was in terms of, is this pond of this size, the kind? I mean, I get that a water feature is something everybody likes. Is this the right water feature for this park? If we made it smaller, if we made it more of a circulating stream or something like that? So I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was kind of going the same place there.
And we really haven't looked at any other options at this point. You know, this is what was identified in the park's master plan, so we've been trying to stay with that. And, you know, just the general consensus I get from people is, like I said, they like to have a water feature out there. Now, whether it's a pond like this or some type of other water feature, we really haven't got into that discussion.
Because I'm just looking at, you know, we're really, I mean, the $60,000 worth of improvements that, you know, we're identifying for the EPA, in lieu of the EPA fine, plus another $400,000 easy. I mean, to get to that, and that's kind of a different conversation. And maybe, maybe we pay the fine and figure out where we're going because it's kind of like that, you know, the walking trail, the river walking trail, you know, you get the grant money or you get the fine replacement set up, but then it's like, there's a lot of other investment that needs to be done with that.
That is truly our purpose of bringing that to, this to you now than waiting till we had, could say, "Well, we had a third of the wall failure or whatever and here's our plan." We just think this leaves us a lot of opportunities to have different thoughts.
Do we, are we 100% confident if we put in this new system that's gonna cost us $60,000, it will take care of the blue, green algae issue we have?
Along with some other features that Parks and Rec have planned, because we were looking at the floating wetlands. But the real idea is to be able to recirculate the water and to put some fresh water in, which we have the irrigation well for. It's gonna require us to test more and look at it more. The issue is we have several years of goose-laden sediment that's piled up in there, which is very, very high in the nitrogen and phosphorus. Until we get that removed, it's just a, the issue will continue on until we clean it out.
You know, I've been talking to Kansas Department of Health and Environment too, that we know there's fish in there. And, you know, I've seen some comments from people, they wish there was more fish in there so they could fish it. But part of the problem is bottom-feeding fish keep that muck on the bottom stirred up. And when that happens, we, there's more of a chance of the algae bloom. You know, most bodies of water have blue-green algae. And it's really not an issue until you have the algae bloom, that's when it becomes toxic. So you get water that's not being recirculated, not much of an aeration. You know, we have the fountain out there, but that fountain just takes water off the surface and blows it up in the air and comes back down. So it's really not bringing water off the bottom and recirculating it. So until we address some of those things, and like Martha said, we get the floating wetlands, you know, the root system on those absorb a lot of the algae. And, but you still need the aeration, you still need the circulation to help do that. So there's a lot of different phases that go in there. But again, these are all things that we looked at. And as we were getting closer to doing it, we started really paying attention to what the walls look like. But holy smokes, you know, if we get this far, we hate to put $60,000 into that and a year later, two years later, the walls fail. So that's why we just wanted to really bring it to your attention.
I was about to say, as originally constructed, it did have a number of quote-unquote "water features", but, you know, I don't know how effective they were at, you know, aerating and recirculating. And I think at least one of them has failed now and is gone.
Right.
We were looking at an aeration system that would be along the bottom and bubble air up from below. And then we did look at, we are following some works that Kansas Department of Health and the Environment's doing. And we're finding out that maybe the...
Ultrasonic.
Ultrasonic is not as effective as this kind of new technology. And then Overland Park has a pond pretty similar to ours and they've done a lot of work with floating wetlands. So we know where the successes have been over the last year, year and a half. So we think we can at least use some other people's knowledge to help us do better.
Is there a way to keep the geese away from the? I noticed Wichita, if you notice, they had a dog, as you, you know, so.
Well, there are, there's some technology out there with some lights, like a strobe light, you know, that's only supposed to really affect the geese and it's low and keeps them from nesting.
Yes, we actually have boxes out there for them to nest in, don't we? Or didn't we at one time? We did though at one time, right? Okay.
Were the geese and the ducks anticipated to be part of this when it was built?
That I don't know, Ron. You answer that. Miss, Ron's our historian.
There were a, maybe a half dozen ducks brought in. But it's just the airways that attract. You got nice green grass from the air they see, they have to eat. A lot of them congregate over at the sand dip or that area. And then they fly in and mingle and they're there all day.
And the high community struggled with geese on a, largely, but on a golf course. They tried shooting off cannons, they tried running the course with dogs. And I went back and there wasn't a goose to be found. And what they found was effective was cutouts of coyotes on the water's edge. And you said, "Well, cutouts on a stick, stuck at the water's edge and the geese wouldn't land." So we, what we've tried to do so far is discourage feeding. And we still have some people who drop fifty-pound bags of...
You know, when I worked for Department of Wildlife and Parks, you know, the resident ducks and geese that are there, they kind of serve as a call flock. So you have migratories that are going over, they hear the ducks and geese that are there, they come in. So we have worked or talked with animal services and they've found some private pond owners that would be willing to, if we can capture them, to take the kind of residents that we have. And if we can help eliminate that, that's not gonna eliminate the whole problem. But if we can get rid of the call flock, we think maybe that'll help with the migratory birds as well.
So let me ask a question. If we take an approach of perhaps making this a smaller body of water, and I'm just, I'm thinking out loud here, does that affect the way EPA would look at our remediation in terms of what we're required to do? For example, if we made the pond half the size?
That would be something I would want to talk with EPA about before I answer. But I think if it was, still had the potential for the harmful algae bloom and we were doing some of the work that we're doing, they'd see logic for it. But if we made it a twenty-foot diameter pond or something very, very small, then I think they would probably not consider that a project.
And I don't know what the numbers are on the cost of doing that because obviously you've got to bring a lot of fill back in. We didn't keep the old stuff that we took out, did we?
No, not close to these.
So in the interest of time, can I pepper you with a few questions that might help frame where we're headed? Knowing what you now know about the condition of the wall and knowing what you know about estimated cost, what's your appetite for proceeding with the EPA solution and just hoping that the pond wall holds up as is?
Well, it's never gonna be as good as it is today. So, you know, you know what's gonna happen to it. So you either fix it or you fill it in. People, it is a destination park. And I don't think you can make that pond too much smaller and people get excited about going down there and getting the pictures taken. And I don't, you know, the kids like it because the geese and ducks are there. But of course, the geese are a problem. I know there is a, I've ever been to the Hyatt Place in Topeka, right off where, what's that street? Busy street where all the...
Watermaker?
Yeah, where meats, I, seventy. But there's a big pond there and geese or ducks, I don't know which one it is. But they're walking around all the time and I have never really studied the water, but it looks clean all the time. I don't know if that's a circulating pond or what, but they may, some of our neighbors may have a way to control the animals and...
Maybe deeper. Ours right now is fairly shallow, which lets the sunlight shine through it and make things, makes the algae...
And from a safety standpoint, we don't want to make it any deeper either, so we're kind of...
The amount of wall damage is people walking on the wall, standing right up at the edge of the pond. It would restrictings, people often submit...
There's probably more so now that those bags are crumbling, so there's probably more damage to it now than there was originally.
The crumbling goes down the devil of the wall.
Yes.
So I think that's kind of one extreme. What's the appetite for filling the pond in? Recognizing that, you know, there's probably a sizable expense to maintain a pond in some form, what's the appetite for filling the pond in?
I am conflicted between the idea, I like the idea that it's an attractive feature in some ways. It's a destination, people go to the gazebo and have pictures taken. I think people like the water. On the other hand, if what we're trying to do is limit our expense profile in places, filling the pond in, I think makes a certain amount of sense compared to repairing it and continuing with the expense. So I'd be honest, I'm conflicted. I kind of like going both ways if that were possible.
So isn't an amenity worth spending a few hundred thousand on?
Yes.
I guess I'm in favor of...
I can't tell you what we'd get for a few hundred thousand yet, but is it worth...
If I didn't walk that place, we'd get so much.
I'm in favor of patching the walls, my feeling, and wait and see what happens with the rest. We'll know a little more about that once we drain it and have a good...
Whereas if you're patching and you get a massive failure, your patch is gonna get thrown away with all the other stuff that you fill it. So you're eventually gonna put a new wall in. I mean, that barbs that's taking the debris out is gonna be taken out the patch as well.
So, okay.
I'd love to fix the whole thing, but I don't know where the money comes from.
You're gonna get five different answers.
Well, I know. I feel like I'm triangulating maybe a little bit. So your appetite for pond, but in a smaller, with a smaller footprint?
Okay, I'm just saying, as somebody who walks that regularly, and I think Commissioner Hoppeck does too, it's a disaster by the water's edge. I mean, I know staff tries to keep up as best they can, but you can't walk around hosing down after the geese and the ducks all the time. So whether you've got a stroller, whether you've got a dog, your shoes are a mess. I mean, it's just, it's, in my opinion, the water fowl there make it not a pleasant place to walk if you're walking along the water's edge. So in regard to the EPA and in some things that we said earlier, I would like to eliminate that problem. And whether that looks like a different type of water feature, I don't know if that's something that the EPA would be cool with because we, because we wouldn't be allowing someplace for, you know, waterfowl to land. And maybe that's a linkage in, you know, what their thing is. But, you know, if we have something that has better circulating water that's gonna be easier for us to maintain in the future, what I don't want to do is just invest half a million dollars in redoing all this and then in two years, we've still got duck and geese poop two inches deep all the way around.
It seems to me like the waterfowl issue has gradually gotten worse over the years because, you know, back in the day... because, you know, back in the day, soon after it was built, I don't remember that being an issue. So apparently it has become more attractive as generations of geese have passed through.
We do have just a handful of people that we have observed and talked to that come out with a 50 pound bag of cracked corn in their trunk and dump it on the ground for them.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is put our thinking caps on, you know, willingness to spend some money because it is an amenity, but we've got to find a balance between
I would like to see what we might do with it if the pond was gone. In other words, if we filled it in, what, could we put something else there that would kind of keep an attraction to the area?
If you built something, all kinds, only I can think of right now is the Bellagio Hotel and But, I mean, not on that scale. But, I mean, if, but if it's fountains and concrete without much grass around it, would the waterfowl still be attracted to that because it's water? Or is it the grass and
I think it's a combination of both. Yes, and you have the calm water there, you have the green grass all the way around in a nice manicured park, that that isn't attractive.
More the combination of
Yeah, I'm not sure if you had a smaller scale fountain where water was constantly being moved and recirculated and the
Right, I mean, you, you could put a fountain and a, and a statue park, I mean, or something.
Something.
Or, or the extension of the, of the downtown. I mean, you, you could have an attraction, but I didn't know if just having the water there itself would still
Like a sculpture park?
Thank you.
And this is a public outreach because we recognize that there are some ways you can control waterfowl. And so we were planning to do some outreach to talk about it and
This is a heavily used park, and I'm not sure how many people go there because of the pond anymore, unless it's to feed the ducks and the fish, which we don't want them doing. But yeah, if you fill that in and you made part of it, you know, we've talked about from the, from the survey we did, you know, there's, you know, chance of a, of a skate park, you know, or is it a, or do you put some pickleball courts in there? I mean, make it something that is, makes it a destination for a different reason. That might, might be less expensive than trying to redo the walls and keep up with the water and all that. I mean, those are just things to think about.
So I think my takeaway is we all recognize this imminent failure and you're open to about anything at this point. So we can come up with And keep it on budget.
Yeah, keep it
You know, you do see quite a number of people using the gazebo as a photo op, things like seeing a prom and so on. I would like to be
But when you take the picture, you don't really have the water. Yeah, the gazebo's a nice option.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe we can do something to make that more palatable without the water. I mean, who wants green water behind them anyway?
It just felt it was important to tell you upfront.
Yeah, we appreciate that because that's probably the, appreciate you being
Their effectors.
Okay.
We have quite a posse out there, so.
Okay.
Okay, as Lauren's getting her slideshow ready here, this is our second study session dealing with the new downtown special event information that we're going over. And Mike, do you want to add anything before we get started?
Yeah, I guess one thing, I know there's been some questions that have come up following the first presentation. So I think the intention is kind of, we need to work our way through the topics and then wrap up. There is a third study session scheduled, so we're trying to give this its proper amount of attention and not cut it short, so we
So it's going to be slightly different than last week because last week we were talking about completely new code, right? We had a stakeholder group, as we talked about, and spent numerous meetings and months kind of working through what all those pieces were. Why we're talking about these two subjects, because they aren't necessarily district specific, is as we started talking about the things that were conflicting in downtown, we realized that these two subjects have to be dealt with. So one of the reasons we have three study sessions is because this topic in particular needs quite a bit of policy feedback from you guys. As you can tell, other people are interested in your policy recommendations on this particular topic. What's also different is we have been doing a special events permit for several years. But there are several pieces missing to that. And as we started discussion, this has both had a good following in-house and out of house. So you've got folks here from the stakeholder group who have been working on the downtown arts and entertainment overlay district, but you also have staff from various departments that are here. And I've got, the last slide kind of goes what we're going to do at study session three. One of those things being looking at that new application and looking at the user manual. But I can't really develop those things until I have the policy direction. So this is, this is kind of, the feedback you provide today is pretty critical on that. But you have a lot of subject matter experts in this audience as well, so if you're looking for feedback. And I know a couple of us are following along. So as you guys are providing dialogue, we're taking all of that in to develop stuff. So as I mentioned, special events and alcohol really overlap and overlap with many of the uses are most noticeable downtown. Particularly, I want to talk about for special events, fees, parades and races, and a little bit on block parties. And then alcohol, I will say of the two drafts that we gave you in your packet, I would have written draft on alcohol a lot more if possible, but I want to keep it readable. But it is really draft, draft, draft. One of the reasons I wanted to give it to you now at such a preliminary level though is Clark Meislinville has been awesome in helping us to get this so that it really reflects state code and the changes that they've made. And then also looks at our existing code, but it, it looks significantly different than the original chapter five. And if we tried to do a red line on it, it would literally be unreadable. So we wanted to give you this as kind of a taster, get used to this. And as we move forward and start to touch on some of these points, I think it would be helpful for you guys to have seen this already. Okay, special events. So just as a reminder, currently, this applies citywide, but is very noticeable in downtown. No specifically adapted code. So if somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to do this event, what should that mean? Well, I wouldn't send you to a special event code. You might go to the parade section, you might go to a fair and entertainment section. There's a variety of things, but nothing specifically to this. The problem is that makes it very hard to enforce the permit. It makes it very confusing for applicants to find that information and know what applies to them. There's also a paper application. I gave you copies of that. There are also some available in the folder, also available on the city's website. I was, one thing that I received feedback on before we even started working with the stakeholder group is this application is just too much. And as somebody who works with applications a lot, usually one of the first things I start looking at is why are we not getting complete applications? Or why are we having to do a certain amount of follow-up? That means that there's pieces missing in the application. This one just requires a significant amount of information most people aren't prepared to answer. And so there's a lot of staff work, even just getting the application complete and in the door. There's no one single information source. We're going to talk about this, but 10 different departments actually have to look at these because a special event can have such a range. And that's why you see such an amount of people in here because it's everybody from the city clerk to the police department, to public parks and rec, to general services. It's an amazing kind of what we're doing. And as we start talking about fees and stuff, I think you'll become more aware of the business case to some of the discussion that we're trying to have. And in order to also provide better customer service, is very resource intensive. We do everything from drop-off blockades to providing police on, en route, to discussing emergency plans, a variety of different things associated with this one permit. But I also mentioned it has no fee. There's no fee really for anything. There's no fee to take it in, there's no fee to review it, there's no fee associated with the amount of levels of service it may need. There are some associated fees, like with reservations and things like that. But in general, pretty much every special event did not have a fee or a charge associated with it. And then block parties have really become quite an issue in the last couple of years. I think for a variety of reasons that are very similar to special events. So we're going to talk a little bit on those and how maybe we can incorporate them in. They're a great tradition, a lot of Salinans love them, but they also create some conflict. And so being able to acknowledge that while we're talking about these is a, is a reasonable time. So after working with both internal and external stakeholders, everybody seemed to agree that we needed something that could apply citywide, it had reasonable and applicable fees, we wanted a digital application, a digital manual to kind of bring all this information together and to look at some cost recovery and definitely deal with block parties. The application. Like I said, the public felt it was just too much. We actually, most people don't know this, but our application is borrowed by many communities surrounding Salina that are smaller than us as kind of the ideal kind of amount of information you'd want to take in. But we have, that's the thing with special events too, is they are really wide-ranging. They go everything from festivals, events for hundreds of people, down to like 50 people in a plaza or a small park event. But many times they have the same level of impact. Bathrooms still have to be opened, doors have to be unlocked, other types of services need to be made available. Blockades, barricades and cones need to be delivered. So one of the things that everybody seemed to kind of gel behind is that there are two levels of service we think we can recognize in our permit. And I think the code is starting to allude to that of kind of a permit light and a permit And however we go with this, one of the best ways to handle it is by going digitally. We already have the right, and within our tech environment here at the city, is something called Seamless Docs. And it's basically an intuitive based forum system. It's almost kind of, the technology's kind of similar to Survey Monkey from the user's perspective. Answer a question, get another question. What you get depends on how you answered the previous question. So that's very advantageous for when people feel very overwhelmed by the paper application. Maybe two thirds of that don't apply to them because they're a light kind of event. Well, then they don't need to deal with the rest of it and it's less overwhelming. So we can use technology to kind of tailor that experience. We can also use that to tailor the type of information we're getting in. Based on how those are, are being answered, we can start to ask much more specific questions. We can ask questions that are, are date related, amount related, things like that. And the system will actually help to calculate that. It also collects quite a bit of data on the backend. So right now we just get your hand filled out or maybe PDF filled out form, it goes in a file, but you're not collecting anything with that. You're not analyzing how many of them we had, how many are in this category, a lot of things that make for smart city management and understanding cost and resources associated with things. Reviewing digitally, right now, this paper application gets scanned and it gets emailed to a bunch of people with attachments. And then Shandy, bless her heart, probably ends up chasing half of them down or having conversations on behalf of the applicant to try and understand what they're saying. You don't need to be certified in anything to understand that that is not the most efficient way to do that. So being able to take this stuff in digitally, we've seen success with this in Llama, for instance, which is our permit review software, that having one consolidated place, assigned partners, predetermined responses, things like that, that make that more efficient is really helpful. Plus SDI can have access. Different to our Llama based system where it's hard to buy at an outside party a seat, we can actually get SDI a seat. So they are able to review, they're able to follow up on things through that system, which is really helpful and it keeps us in that same digital world.
Lauren, do you anticipate like the Seamless Docs being able to like be used roughly when we, when we pass this arts and entertainment ordinance? I mean, have you guys started, I'm assuming, making some preliminary flow charts? Like if I'm having a carnival, I need this as the next step or?
Yeah, so we strongly modeled this off of the City of Grand Rapids.
Okay.
And just for limitation of time, I didn't want to necessarily go through every piece of that.
No, I was just curious as to not, whether or not it was going to take, you know, like months to, to build the Seamless Docs or if you guys kind of already had a template in mind.
I know government can get kind of a bad rap for siloing, but I have just been so impressed by all the departments. I mean, showed up, sent their people, we sent out a draft manual and everybody filled their stuff in. So like our manual is like 90, or 80% complete. What we need feedback on is things like fees because that's what an applicant needs to know. How much is it going to cost me or how much time does it take me to get this or things like that? So some of the things we're asking here today will help us finish that up.
Commissioner Hodges, our, our staff just went through last year moving over to Seamless Docs on quite a bit of the administration for the River Festival.
Oh, yeah.
It's helped streamline the process and they were, our administrative support staff was able to do that, build those documents and have them function for the clients very quickly and efficiently. So I, we're, we're all on for that. And I, I know that with Lauren's staff that, and the other input, there's more than adequate help to build that.
Well, that's, it's nice to have you to know that there's already been like a troubleshooting process
It's very responsive and intuitive and, and easy to use. You don't have to have a 100 page owner's manual or an IT professional to be able to, to utilize that, that, those forms.
If you've ever built a Survey Monkey survey and you understand like logic based decisions, it's not racket science. I mean, you got to play with it and you got to test it out a little bit. But part of the reason we're doing all this at the same time is what we found with the stakeholders for downtown is we couldn't talk about a lot of downtown stuff unless we talked about the special events because that's where a lot of the conflict came in and that's where a lot of the resources came in. So let's talk about that first policy decision, submittal deadlines. If you are having a parade and you show up at the city three days before your parade and hand in an impairment application, I have nothing to tell you that I can't take that. I have nothing
That's not an outlandish scenario.
Super real. So, I mean, this is just, I mean, that's a really basic reason about why you want some of this stuff in code. Talking with all of these different folks and having this discussion, our thought was ideally six months is a really good amount of time, especially for those kind of the heavy, the heavy end of those events. The light events could really be in that 30 day window. And I know I'm kind of asking you guys to think in generalities, but we've had a lot of discussion around like, you know, level one, two, three and four or something like that, that, you know, level one is super, super simple. You need to rent a plaza, you need some bathrooms open, you know, just they're really small events that we could turn around pretty fast. But once you start adding, you know, 50 plus people to a scenario and you need things from general services dropped off and you need police review and those types of things, we're, that, six months goes fast. And what we find too, and this is not to be critical, because I think the other thing that everybody talked about is special events are important. We get that. We don't want to turn them away, but we need to find some kind of balance. And within, if you don't know some of these things in six months that we're asking you to think about in your application, you probably shouldn't be having this event. And that happens a lot too, where city staff is trying to make this stuff work for all kinds of things people haven't thought about. And it can get, it can get very challenging.
Does that include parades? Six months?
Well, I
So what if you win the Super Bowl or your local football team wins a national, don't you want to fast track an event or?
I, I think that's very reasonable, Commissioner Ryan. I mean, one option could be a three month option maybe. One of the things we want to talk a little bit about are pre-approved race routes and pre-approved parade routes. That if you're in one of these, that means PD and, and life safety professionals, general services, everybody's started to sort this out. We know exactly how many barricades you need, we know how many cops you need, we know roughly how long it's going to be, those types of things.
Yeah, I, I think we have some events that we're trying to accommodate whatever their vision is. And then we have events where we can say, we have a model that we can plug this into and, and a win in the state championship might be an example of that where we need to pull And, you know, winning the state championship might be an example of that where we need to pull a parade together real quick. Here's what works versus a marathon. We, we, it used to seem pretty frequently, they wanted it to start at a sponsor and end at a sponsor, which then manipulated the entire route through the community. And when you're trying to customize, that's when it gets real intensive.
Well, and the other thing is not maybe understanding how long the parade is going to be. You know, how, how many applicants I guess do you have in it? Road closure, I think a lot of us talked about, once you close a road, we really, six months is where we should be. I think the city manager per code right now that we've gotten draft form gives the right for the city manager to make some exceptions in those particular circumstances. I think those are kind of rarities.
I think that's the place to be, yeah.
But we have talked, is once you do a road closure, what we're finding is that the people affected by the road closure need notification. We don't do that right now. And so by the time you send something out, give time for them to respond, get it back, process that, realistically, you're looking at two months. So then if changes have to be made to that special event based on concerns, comments through that, your time just really starts ticking. A lot of times, the other one that's difficult is especially on parades and races, is people don't realize the amount of volunteers they need to have. And so if they're not thinking about those things six months in advance, we are days to the event and sitting here going, holy cow, this has been advertised. Now city staff's in a position of going, yeah, no, no parade, no, no race because you guys don't have the right amount of volunteers. Well, that's also because we're having this discussion seven days before this should be happening or two weeks before this should be happening. So a lot, a lot of, you're not allowing time for good decision and, and best use of resources either. And the other thing is when you're allowing that stuff in two weeks in advance, that means that department needs to have staff to deal with it and that department needs to find staff and you are totally shuffling workloads. Again, that's a real challenge to address, especially when you have several of them happening at a time. You take Smoggy River Festival, for instance, we have a lot of resources that are out the door making that work. And somebody just shows up and says, well, I want to do a parade now. Nothing prioritizes that, nothing can address that. So it's, it's really challenging.
I perceive one of the difficulties with this being is even having the applicants aware, particularly if they haven't done this very much, of what it takes. And they're going to be shocked at six months. They're going to say, I ought to be able to do this in two months, you know, what's hard about this? And so I, I think there's, there's got to be a public education component to this thing. So people, even if they haven't done events before, can be given something and say, this is what it takes to plan an event in a safe manner.
Well, timing wise, I'm just going to kind of keep an eye on this meeting. One of the things that I'd like to show you is, we really liked the City of Grand Rapids. They have this manual that they basically do online. And it's every time you go to do the permit, like right within the text, it's like hyperlink. Oh, and by the way, if you haven't seen our manual, by the way, if you haven't seen our manuals. And it's even in the first question of their application, have you read the manual, yes or no? So they're really trying to shove you back to that. But it's so critical because each one of those departments has some different rules. And so a parade is slightly different than a street fair, which is slightly different than a really big retirement party. So there's a variety of things that need to be considered. The nice thing about that manual is if you want to look at that because you've never applied for one of these before at two o'clock in the morning in your pajamas, cool, we have a spot. Here's this manual. And it's really, it's a, it's a step by step by step by step example. And we had people on the stakeholder committee kind of look through that, try and take an example application from Grand Rapids to see if you'd never done this before, does it seem a lot more doable? And what we found was yes. And I think from an efficiency point of view, both for customers and for staff, each phone call that an applicant has to call in and have, that's roughly thirty to sixty minutes of time. If you can have a significant amount of questions answered before you make that call, that's a better experience for you and a better use of staff time in processing those more efficiently, answering more complicated questions. And that kind of dives right into that next category is a pre-application meeting. We use this a lot in permitting for more complicated things. You know, making it something optional, especially if you're new to an event or planning events. But those bigger things like for a hundred plus people, maybe that's a requirement is you need to come in and have a pre-application so that we're not trying to do all this stuff on the backend. Because it's amazing, the psychology of people, once their application's submitted, they think they're good. Where, hey, you guys said two weeks or thirty days on your website, where's my permit? You know, we, we got a lot of information missing or we need to have additional conversations. So the pre-apps can really make sure that the application we get in is the most successful. So that's, that's one option of something we could do to better address application quality.
So the app, so the pre-app meeting would actually come before they've been directed to the website to read the manual and to fill out their application or?
No, most times people decide they're going to have a charity walk.
Right.
And they'll go to the city website to look for the permit. So at that time, when you download the permit, you're going to see, here's the manual. We're going to suggest that you take a look through this. It's really a step by step, it's going to help you process many of the things to fill out your application. But some of them still are going to get to the end of that and be like, I don't know, here.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to have that conversation. Even the most well-intended application is still on a very complicated event. We probably need to have more of a conversation ahead of time because there's just things that we couldn't have even anticipated in the manual. If you're having an event for a hundred plus people, that's a lot of people. It's a lot of traffic, it's a lot of bathrooms, it's a lot of, all kinds of things. So no different than a complicated application for maybe a planning issue, it would be good to have that conversation upfront. That, that's a, that's an option. Notification. This is something we saw specifically this summer really start to kind of come to a head is once you closed streets, once you changed flow of traffic, affected parking, people wanted to be notified. And that's something that we don't require in our current permit. One of the things that we could look for in our permitting process, and that's why we look at that duration of how far out do you have to be to apply, is that we probably should be doing that. What is the criteria for that notification level? Like I said, I think street closure is a critical one, maybe over a certain amount of people.
How's that look? Is that a mail it, something to them, email something, call them?
I've, we've seen it done two ways. I think the one that has the least impact on staff is, and, and cost overall with postage and things like that, is doing a petition. Basically, you need to go around to everybody who's affected and they signed a petition recognizing, they know about your event, when it's coming. We've seen a combo where you send out a notification, but the applicant's in charge of their petition response. That puts some of the owners on them to go kind of hoof it and talk to those people because staff can't ever fix that. You, you need to go have some of those conversations. A lot of times we'll get written comments on those things. A two minute conversation between the applicant and the person or business affected could have solved a lot of those questions. So petitions are important.
So is, so is the city going to run the notification process or is that a requirement for the applicant?
I think that's a, that's a good question.
Because I can see benefits to both sides, you know?
But I can also see costs and time to both sides as well.
Yeah.
So petition is one option, mail out, written response is another option. I think in several of the examples we saw, petitions were really quite normal. Anything else on this slide before we go further?
Just, just one last thing. In terms of the parade submittal deadlines, I was just trying to do some math. So that would mean that like for Parade of Lights in November, the application would need to be in in May. I mean, and ideally like the Tri-Rivers Fair, parade application should have been done last month and like Faye for a Cure would be done this month. So I mean, that, the, the only reason I'm, I'm, just having been involved with, with some of those things is like when we set the date like for Faye for a Cure. I mean, the Parade of Lights is different because it's always the same day, right? But I know that with certain events like Faye for a Cure, I know that they're conscious with avoiding like a K-State home game, for example. And so sometimes there's, I mean, there's some other things at, at play and I just worry that, you know, if we set that that far in advance, there might be less of a chance for a successful event on their part if there's going to be, you know, part of their participants are going to be at, you know, maybe someday it'll be a KU football game, but right now it's K-State football game, so.
I, I might, I might mention, I mean, in terms of, we've got a number of stakeholder committee folks here too. But these tentative dates were discussed with the entirety of that group after learning about the impact that it has. But on, on the other side, I've seen shorter durations of special events that our office has helped participate in or that have been requested that conflict with merchants who plan on sales and have already done marketing and, and, and expect people to be at their store and then find out they've lost all of their on-street access for the duration of that parade when they might have expected to have their clients available earlier. I do think with the, the lack of planning that sometimes goes into this by setting that six month date is really going to be helpful in terms of helping those organizations to better anticipate and plan. And we're kind of proposing this as a best practice, not necessarily as optimal for the presenter, but it is for the community. And, and so I, I think keeping this in mind, that this isn't the producer's benefit, it's for all of the other stakeholders and, 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 you know, both beneficiaries and victims, you know, of, of those events as those are being planned. Because there are some organizations who do plan that far in advance and, and being respectful to them and giving the city staff and SDI and other participants a chance to communicate with those downtown stakeholders is important.
Well, the conversation that we've been having this last year, I think Shandy can talk to us, we're seeing applications coming in faster and they're, they're coming in more ahead of time because we've been having this discussion for a while now, you guys got to get in here sooner. You know, and, and explaining, and I think the more they do them, they more start to understand. And I think for many of us, it's not the things that are happening on a yearly basis that are the hard ones.
They're the new events or the one offs.
Yeah, and-
And I would suggest that if we start to have the bulk of the conversation six months in advance and things evolve a little bit, that's better than not starting the conversation because you're waiting for-
So could the six months in advance not be tied to a specific date, but maybe just a range of ten days? They know they want to have the event, they don't know quite where they want to put it or there's other things at play?
I think the thing though is you've got city staff who's now based on that, setting their vacation schedules. They're trying to make sure their workloads are shuffled, their equipment's available, all of those things. And, and I think one place this reflects is the fees. Both, both the groups, let's talk, if you don't mind, because I think these kind of go hand in hand. I think Brett did a good job of kind of explaining it. We've always thought about this permit really from one perspective, the person who's applying. And there's a lot of people impacted by each one of these. So trying to look at some kind of equitable way to address this for everybody. And when we look at fees, the stakeholder group, we said, you know, what, what do you think is doable? We've never had anything before, how do we handle this? A lot of times at city level, we look at an application fee. So you turned it in, we reviewed it, you're essentially paying for that staff time to review and go through that process. If you choose not to go forward with it, that, that's on you, but that's what it costs us to deal with that. Then a lot of times there's a permit fee, the actual thing which is being permitted, costs X. Some things come with additional services or, or when I say additional, there's kind of base level services you may need to pay for and then above and beyond services you may need to pay for. When we talked to the stakeholder group, which was the one that we've been working with for the downtown project, they said, you know, application fee plus a permit fee plus, that's a lot. I think we're going to scare people off. And an important part of putting every, all this effort into downtown is to not scare people off. We still want these events to happen. But we did think the permit fee was a reasonable fee, like based on the level of what you've got going on. Smaller, smaller fee, bigger thing, bigger fee, because you're just going to use more resources. It's that simple. And then staff agreed with that, but we, we definitely agree that the complexity and the impact should be based on the permit fee. I mean, if you're doing something big, there are more costs associated with that. But both groups wholeheartedly agreed, and this happens, I think, more than the city realizes. And just having this conversation with staff, everyone was like, oh yeah, oh yeah. Is, an application will get filled out by the applicant. They will say they plan on having a hundred people. Everybody reviews it, we say, well, that means this amount of barricades, you're going to need this many bathrooms. It's like race day or event day and we get a panicked phone call. We have so many more people than we expected or this and that. And so suddenly we've got people out there dropping off barricades. We're, we're, we're doing all kinds of things last minute to adjust to this, which is all a lot more expensive than had we known upfront. And, and lots of good people. But sometimes I think the whole point of it is not really recognizing the cost and what it takes to do this stuff. It's just easy to throw a number up, oh fifty. Because the city will help, right? The city will pick up all the trash. The city will drop off more barricades if we need them. You're not getting charged anything.
Do you like it for a way to adjust the fees?
Yeah, so there should be kind of a fairness. We saw in several examples where if you aren't within a reasonable range, let's say you said you had a hundred and fifty people coming, that's what the permit is, is based on. You have like a twenty, a twenty person window, twenty high, twenty low. If, if you're not within that window and you're over and we have to come drop additional services off or come close things that didn't need to be used, you're getting billed. And it's kind of, the concept is poor planning on your part doesn't necessarily justify this additional cost. As a community, we've already made a decision to not charge for special events because we think they're that important to kind of bringing the community together. But if you're not looking at that resource and the services that go into it in a meaningful way, then you probably need to be billed for it. And it's, it's a little tough love, but at the end of the day, I mean, PD overtime hours alone for a race or a parade, those types of things can have significant changes.
And, and we're not talking full cost recovery because that's just not even plausible. But something to try to bring some accuracy to it.
Do you have a sense of range of fees at this point?
So what we've asked all the departments to do, and we've just got, about got everybody, is we've taken police officers at different ranges, EMS people at different ranges, general services people at different ranges and went to, because we have a pay range, right? And we've gone to the median right in the middle and used that as an hourly rate. One, we wanted to know that because as we calculate these events, even if we're not going to charge to cost, I think it's worthwhile for you all to understand what each one of those events costs, because we've never really calculated that. But we were looking at using those in some kind of percentage rate to do that billing. So, you know, you needed two extra police officers, you needed X amount of staff time. It takes two hours to go back, open that facility, shut it up, drop these things off. You know, here's, here's who would do that, here's their hourly rate, fifty percent of that is the fee.
Is the basic permit going to be based on the numbers they tell you?
I think it's probably one of the most logical ways to base that. And we've looked at other examples.
So they're going to aim high?
Well, and then they have to pay a higher fee. So let's say five hundred dollars is our top permit fee. And that's, that's whatever, you know, let's say five hundred plus people. You still have to pay that fee and you'd be surprised how many people, and you'd have to do the insurance to match those types of expectations. You'd be surprised how many events we get in who, who aren't prepared for that insurance. And even that five hundred dollar amount would kind of throw them off. I think what we're hoping is that some of the smaller levels like, you know, just somebody needs to reserve a plaza for fifty people or maybe a parking lot for a hundred people, that we're looking at a hundred dollars, maybe two hundred. That's enough to say like, if you can't put a hundred bucks into thinking about this, we have other questions probably about the event because the amount of services that you've got running around just to pull this off is considerable. And I think one of the things that has come up in conversation is there's nothing like a little bit of skin in the game to make people realize kind of what everybody else has in it and maybe think a little bit more about your application and getting better information from them. So they could try and aim high, but that's why one of the options is if you're using significantly less resources than you said you would, that means we still went out and dropped all that stuff off. You know, barricades, I'm looking at Jim, you know, he's got cones and barricades and he went and dropped them out for an event of three hundred people and you only have fifty, but you didn't really want to get serious about that number. Well, we're going to charge you to go pick them all back up again. So that's one, one way to look at that.
I would say, I mean, in just a couple or three years, the Arts and Humanities, well, it's been four years now, but that we've been helping a little bit with downtown- well, it's been four years now, but that we've been helping a little bit with downtown programming and some of the events. The number of misinterpretations of the general public of what they needed and what they asked for and then what they expected is substantial. So having these guidelines in place will help them have a more successful event as well, along with some accountability. And so kind of showing that seriousness and not even close to recovering the cost to the city of what it actually costs to deliver that service, I think is a reasonable kind of pay-to-play, have some skin in the game and pay a little closer attention to what is being asked.
And I don't think anybody's really, like I said, you can use a window, 20 over, 20 under. You guys can expand that window, 50 over, 50 under, but it's, we just, part of the way in which we can deal with some of these costs and deal with the workload associated with it is really knowing the impact of the event. And so if the impact's way off, we're really not fixing the problem. We should just probably stay the way we are right now. And I, I think it's just, one of the things we all realized too when we were talking about these is, really, people do not understand, even with the best of intentions. Well, I just, I just need a few places for people to park. Well, when we run the numbers, your few spaces are actually 82 spaces. It's four bathrooms, two police officers. And once we start having that conversation, it's always amazing how many of them are like, wow, I just, I just didn't know. So what we're hoping for in that recommendation is to get better information. One of the things that's come up a little bit is, and we just kind of talked about the unplanned, but also we've seen in different places like trash can rental or additional barricades and cones. You know, let's say we limit the amount of those, or your event is such a size that we're not going to drop off trash cans, but you need more. You don't have them to bring in for a fee of 20 bucks a can, Jim's team will drop them off. We don't offer those kind of services right now, but it's very normal to say, once you hit a certain level, not only take all your trash with you, but you got to figure out how to take it with you. So we need to tell them, bring your own trash cans. The next step to that is, do you want to offer a service of, or you can rent them from us? This is an interesting one, and I, I think we need a lot of feedback on this. So for-profit versus nonprofit. If you are renting or using a public space and you are going to charge a fee at the door, you know, here's my awesomeness party. If you'd like to come in, it's five bucks a head. And I've closed a block, or I've rented a plaza, and I'm going to take that five bucks and it's going in my pocket. It's not necessarily for my nonprofit, or my charity, or a school, or something like that. Do we charge a different fee? Is there a different permit fee?
The other consideration with that that I might give you before you answer is that might just be a cost recovery fee and not a profit fee. It might be to pay for an artist, or it might, you're a performer, or it might pay for some of the rented equipment for the experience that's happening. And so we don't currently have a way of determining what that is.
Well, when we looked at a lot of examples from other communities, that was a really common question that got asked on the application, and they did differentiate in their fees.
Well, my comment, I guess, is that it's, that's okay to me. I mean, overriding, I think, you got to take it easy on the fees and see where we go with this because we can always change it.
Okay.
I don't want to, you know, we're just kickstarting downtown. We don't want to take anything away from that ever.
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking...
With the complexity.
I agree. I agree in terms of the fees. I'd rather, I think I'd rather start lower and go higher. I mean, I'm just thinking about like KKO people being like, by the way, you're two months late with your application and we need 500 bucks. I mean, I'm just thinking about, and I know I'm thinking about it from the person putting on the event point of view because that's, that's my background. But just in terms of conversations that like I've had with, and Penny's had with KKO in the past, I mean, I'm wondering if then that means that SDI will be underwriting that, or if Visit Salina, or, you know, what exactly an event like that, what that would look like. I don't, I mean, I, because I don't, I don't see them being like, oh yeah, happy to write that check. And I realize that we need to get some cost recovery, but I'm...
So the highest fee that we looked at when we were playing with this from a staff level was $500. Most of it was, we looked at it as kind of like a 25, 50, 100, 250, 5 kind of thing. Especially at a for-profit event that's making thousands, thousands of dollars. I mean, just dropping off the cement barricades for the drag race is bupo dollars. And so, and that's where that six months comes in. And that's where I was kind of trying to make that connection between the amount of staff time able to review something versus fees. If we can have some more lead time, it is way easier for us to balance out the cost of special events because we are not last minute handling staff workload. And it lets us build those costs in a lot more, which is super helpful.
And staff may disagree with me, but I think if we make great strides in terms of organization and lead time, that's what's really going to pay dividends for staff and what frustrates them day in and day out. The cost recovery, the principle of it and the philosophy is hard to, knowing how much resources we put into it, sometimes that's hard to see how expensive an event is for no fee. And I don't want to complicate it any further, but I think there are events, KKO is an example of that. Well, you, as a city commission, may not have a full understanding of the value of the resources that we're providing. I mean, we're probably talking tens of thousands of dollars worth of services for a certain event. And so, you know, there may be a point where it's not a fee issue, but we quantify it and that's an additional conversation to be had to confirm that we want to go forward, providing that level of support for that particular event.
Well, and some events bring substantial amount of dollars into the community too, so there's a...
Well, that's why I think like...
Something to offset that also.
The fee schedule, I mean, we're not even talking thousands. We're not even talking about them based on calculation of total square footage or the amount of money that they're bringing to the community, which is one way we've seen them calculated in other places. We're talking about 500 bucks. 500 bucks. Like, you know, what that, in the scheme of things, for some of those events is really not a lot. But in general, we're talking about 100, 200.
I guess where, one of the things I'm having trouble wrapping my head around is if you're doing a, you know, the race for faith for a cure down Santa Fe, whether you have 300 or you have 500 people, you still have to have the same amount of barricades and the same amount of people.
So.
So.
Excellent transition.
Okay.
Well, and I think one of the reasons we're bringing all these different pieces up is you almost end up with, it's a formula for how you calculate some of these things. So if time, like lag time to review an application is a big cost save for us in the long run, then maybe we don't charge as much in permit fees. And having smaller events be charged these fees versus, or having pre-approved race routes and parade routes. We know, and we've actually already had these conversations between general services, PD, and several other staff, like, we've got, I think narrowed down to a good handful of routes. If you're picking one of these routes, cool, here, this is the level of service that is. And I think we can bring that down to a lower level. So it's not a 500 because it's X amount of people. You've got one of these race routes and you're under this threshold, cool. You're in that, let's say, 100 or 200 area. But if you want to customize a race route,
Right.
that's, that's, that's staff time to sit down, that's more police officers, those kinds of things. So I think particularly races and parades are almost their own category. And we kind of talked about that, is maybe they just, they're in their own category. It's like, here's a base fee. And then if you do these other things, that might be how we calculate races versus a festival, or a party, or a market, or something like that. Because the, with parades and races, it's all about street closure, about barricades, and about PD. And that's where we're hoping that you guys would be in favor of moving to a pre-approved route scenario. We sat down, Shandy and Dean brought like just about every race route we could find from the last 10 years and sat down with general services and PD and said, what was successful about these? What were, what ones were used the most often? Which ones were logical to kind of set up? And how did they get staggered around the city so we could meet kind of different types of races? So I'm feeling pretty good about that. We also identified a homecoming route, and we identified kind of a basic Santa Fe route. Santa Fe is the hardest with the parades. And in particular because where the parade starts and where it stops, a lot of times on smaller parades ends up being somebody's private parking lot. And because we don't have a pre-approved route, it's, it kind of takes some of those things out of that control. And we'll get a call from that private property owner saying like, hey, like, how do I have all these floats turning around in my parking lot? So it's a whole nother scenario, but you guys permitted this. All right, let's just have this conversation now. Here's where you can start, and here's where you can end. If it's so important to deviate from that, that's that additional fee scenario.
I mean, when the hotel's online, and I just heard last week at the temple, I think they've got 17 weeks in a row of weddings. And if there happened to be a Saturday parade at one of those, it could create a real...
That would be trouble.
Problem, yeah. So I think that coordination would be important.
The other thing with the pre-approved routes is you've got higher safety. PD is familiar with those routes, so if you have officers who haven't done it as often or are new to the force, they're, everybody's kind of familiar. There's not a lot of just showing up, trying to kind of figure out, these are the parade routes, these are the race routes. It's, it gives us more time to deal with the amount of volunteers needed to handle those, safety and crowd control. There's a variety of things by having those standardized that you can control a lot of the unknowns in these situations. Plus, it makes it way easier for us to review those permits.
The other thing, and I know you're well aware of this with previous conversations, but bus service, you know, every time a street is closed, it interrupts bus service. And being able to have adequate knowledge and time for drivers to be scheduled, for routes to be done, published, new times established from where and how you're going to navigate around that with, especially during the parades that hit during peak hours. I think it's important to include, or to have adequate notice for those service providers as well.
And those are great examples of like how we end up at six months.
Yeah.
So is that something where OCCK could be part of the Seamless Docs access group?
Yeah, or we do something like if we use that threshold of any type of street closure as a notification component, they would just be on that automated notification list kind of thing. That's the kind of thing too, like SDI, if it's within downtown, they'd be on that automated notification. And that's a very good idea, Commissioner Hodges, is to put them in. Because one of the things we've talked about with Penny is sending her emails just with everybody's daily traffic, just having one spot she can go in and go approved or approved but with conditions is a much more efficient way to review stuff.
Right.
We've also talked about using Seamless Docs, particularly for the downtown plazas, is a way to also make sure they're getting picked up after special events and things like that, and kind of put back the way they're supposed to be. Because that'll be new in reserving those. Block parties! Very, very fun, but few conflicts here. Some of the things that we've seen in the last few years is the permitting itself needs to be a bit more inclusive and get a bit more details. It pretty much gets thrown to general services for a blockade, rental permit, and street closure. But there are sometimes several other things that are affected by this. The example of why it comes into special events is if there is a parade or some other city event happening, and then that block ends up getting closed, there's no communication between those things the way this current system is set up. So having those all filtered through one thing will also help with street closures. Very similar to special events is notification. Not everyone on the block thinks it's a good time for a block party. So...
Almost never.
So where we saw in other Kansas communities was a petition getting, you know, like 80% of your neighbors are on board with this idea before the closure occurs.
Does that include the Fourth of July as a block party?
Yeah.
Playing that example out of my head, you're going to have to get everybody on your, on your street to agree that that's...
That they're okay with closing off the street to hold a block party, even on Fourth of July.
So what would the threshold be, everybody or 80%?
I, that's up to you guys. I mean, I think what I saw was...
I see where this is going.
I understand where policy comes from, so...
Haven't been sitting here very long, have you, buddy?
Eyes open for clearance.
I like a percentage, and we saw that common in other communities.
And how far in advance do you have to apply for a block party?
I don't think we have a limit right now, do we, Mike?
Oh, you're on the books now?
No. So for, and I'm thinking of Jim's request for services.
We give them days before the event is due.
So I think...
30 days?
You know, 30 days. We may say something for Fourth of July because it is the biggest block party weekend, is that those need to be in early. I think we tried something kind of like that last year where it's like...
Have we ever run out of barricades?
We have. We, like, one of the things I wanted to mention is the number of participants may not affect the number of barricades, but it will affect the number of officers. Or like, if there's 2,000 runners, what we found is you have, you have very fast runners who finish the race, you know, under three hours, or you have some people that finish six hours later. And it changes the game pretty significantly in terms of that. I forgot the last question.
Well, the thing, we saw this last year, is it...
Oh, yeah. It's multiple events. We will have especially special events and also block parties. We have hundreds of barricades, and we ran, we, it is not uncommon to like, man, we need to hurry up and pull these barricades to get them over to this next special event. It gets tight.
We also saw people charging for block parties this last year. So trying to charge to get into their own neighborhood.
They had to pay to get into the block party.
So...
Just don't go.
Well, that's a simple street parade.
Right now, we ask for a certification signature from the applicant that they have notified all of their neighbors. But we will get calls when they find out, you know, that the event, you know, the event is now taking place. They never came and talked to me, and it's a pretty common feature of block parties.
Notification can take the form of, I've gotten this permit from the city, you like it or lump it, versus, I need to have a conversation with you, this is what I plan to do, how do you feel about it?
But each, we look at, just from a business perspective, each one of those phone calls, it's staff time to walk somebody through why we gave that permit. So on a busy day during Fourth of July, Jim can lose a half of somebody's day just taken, barricade, block party, conversations with people, where, that's where I'm kind of an advocate for petitions and things like that. Again, two people having a conversation who live on the block can be much more effective than three or four home calls to staff plus a written letter and several other issues. So we are hoping to deal with block parties and are looking for feedback on things like the notifications and fees and just even being able to put that into code to say, no, you can't charge for your block party.
What's a block?
Yeah, definitions is always a good question.
That's a really good point. You block off a road section, but you're impacting people that are used to using that road section.
I'm thinking cul-de-sac, you know?
So I guess even just having kind of insight from you guys, if you think it's us worth kind of further developing this and looking at maybe an example, notification?
Concept of the petition, and then it wouldn't expect 100% to sign on, but you have a strong majority of your block.
What seems reasonable, 75%, 80%, 50%?
60.
Wow, we are on the same page. I was going with 62.
I love it. I think one of the things I'm hearing about that, that window for getting applications in for special events is six months maybe for the heavy stuff, but trying to find those things that might fit into a three-month window. Does that seem reasonable? I mean, we staff love six months, but I understand kind of where you guys are coming from, that three months may be more appropriate for a certain level of things.
Well, and I think if you've got the proposed routes adopted, and most of these events, I mean, have been done for multiple years, and it's not like you're dealing with a bunch, you know, of newbies here. I'm thinking, yeah, three to four months.
So one timing consideration that Lauren and I've talked about that hasn't come up is if we build an appeal process in, if the staff or the city manager denies, you create an appeal process, then it needs time to get to you as the city commission. And then staff needs time to react if you actually, you know, grant the appeal. So the Monday in advance of a Friday event is probably as close as you're going to want to cut it. I think, I think there's as many, if, there's 14 to 21 days just in an appeal process.
I want to have a special meeting.
Right, yeah, exactly. So that's just one more reason why advanced application... Right, yeah, exactly. So, that's just one more reason why advanced application process, get it, get a decision in place versus cut it down to the wire. Um, because appeals won't be practical if we don't have enough lead time.
Yeah. I just think about our plazas. If somebody's trying to do a special event in a plaza and they want to use, you know, have a couple food truck stuff, they may not know that six months in advance.
So I think that's where we come into special event light. And so it's, it's kind of helping me, of course, to hear you guys kind of think through this. I think those things that are in that super light category, you just, you just need to be in that plaza. If you don't need anything else, that's just a plaza reservation. If you want to pull...
A plaza reservation and a food truck reservation, and that takes care of it.
Probably good until Nancy finds out you're gonna have knife throwing as entertainment. But if, if you reserve that space and you're still trying to figure out the use, that's a lot different.
We went through some of that, Commissioner Hodger, Mayor. Uh, and, and I think that the articulation of the light versus the heavier and kind of the thresholds of what that means, of what that kicks in in terms of notice. I don't think that, that Lauren or the committee was suggesting that everything defaults to six months for something as simple as a plaza. But, but once a higher proportion of city services, electricity, um, trash, uh, risk management, those kinds of things, once, once the threshold of your event kicks those in, you're automatically adding days.
And those things maybe need to be listed so someone knows that if you're using this, 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 or this, you're gonna fall in that six-month category.
And that's what's gonna be located in that guide, in that user guide to say, "Hey, you want to do a special event? Okay." Or you, if you said yes to the following, here's, here's the...
Here's your lead time that the city requires.
So I think what we'll work on for third study session is giving you a draft table of fees on how those would be calculated.
And...
And timelines.
Yep, and timelines.
And timelines, fees, services that are required, yeah.
And the nice thing with, with kind of using an algorithm or a formula like that is you can use the application and how questions are answered to calculate that. We do it that, for instance, like in building permits with Lama, what is the square footage of your structure, X, Y, and Z? That's gonna help to calculate your permit because we know each foot is charged at X. So, you know, we can set this up that it's gonna start asking those questions that will help to calculate that. So we'll put those kind of in, into a table, let you see what that looks like.
The, the other thing that Lauren, um, kind of alluded to, but that this will help streamline in terms of, of, uh, preparation of the, of the applicant, is if this ties into the, um, Parks and Rec program of reserving spaces, then they'll have a place within that to already predetermine whether that space is even available, rather than assuming Campbell Plaza's all open or, or that someone else hasn't already reserved it from another need. And so being able to, being able to have them have an online system of being able to reserve and, and identify those, those public spaces, I think will also be helpful, especially when it's in parks and...
When we have some of these, when we have some of these special events, are we using on-duty police or do we have to, are we calling in additional police force to pay overtime? In same way with, uh, with, uh, with Jim's department, are you using, are those people already on the clock or are we having to bring extra help in?
Both. For us, it's, it's both. If, if, it depends when, when the event is.
When it is, right.
Um, I would say the majority of them are, uh, on-call in, so I end up paying overtime.
And I think that would be important too, maybe. Are we using on-call or is it a, an additional?
And it can, these events can generate a considerable amount of overtime and for fire in terms of emergency standby.
Same way, we're, majority of the time, it's people on overtime.
Okay.
Because the state, the street is staff.
Right.
And we have a minimum staffing. We can't have them committed to something if their services are needed.
That's what I wondered, okay?
So just kind of, uh, touching on a couple of things, I think we're gonna dive a little bit more in specifics on alcoholic beverages, chapter five, at third study session. But like I said at the beginning of this, I wanted to kind of get you guys looking at that, seeing what that new layout would look like. Uh, what we're proposing is complete repeal and replace of chapter five. So I think it's, it's a clean break for the amount of changes that have happened. It's, it's just, it'll be a better way to live with the code afterwards. Um, if you can remember, 2019, about significant, uh, cereal malt beverage changes. Our code was already kind of, um, just through several other, uh, changes to state code was kind of already a little piecemeal. And once the CMV stuff hit, it just, it became really obvious, like, it was time for a quick timeout to re-sort through it all. And once we started talking with the downtown stakeholder group about where, where if you hold an event in a plaza, how, how do you get your liquor license? What, what would be appropriate? Uh, not to mention, the state, state code still recognizes CMV, but it doesn't really exist. So we can't really do anything about what's in state code, but we did start looking at our code and really moving the language to alcoholic beverage, which is a better definition and it's, it's, it's the real thing that people would want if they were gonna hold an event. I think what I would encourage you to start looking at are the locations, because we have this broken up into certain parks and other public spaces versus right-of-way, and the state recognizes and treats right-of-way differently. So you may see some of those locations doubled up and you're like, "Well, why do you guys have Dean Evans Stadium and Dean Evans Stadium under right-of-way and locations?" Well, one's got right-of-way involved, the other is like actually on that public space. So those are two, uh, starting to look at those locations, understanding how those apply. Common consumption areas are something completely new. It's a state tool that allows us to, for instance, if you're coming in for an event, um, let's, let's take a pub crawl, for instance. As long as you can fully barricade off the area and close the street, you could actually turn a pub crawl area into a common consumption area, rather than having to have a bunch of different permits pulled, things like that. Or have one entity take on, um, a particular liquor license, that common consumption area can be there. Um, we see these used in downtowns in Wichita and Topeka, especially for arts areas, that the consumption area always lives there and it's permitted, but it's only in use when it's barricaded off. But instead of have...
So that's the whole downtown. I mean, you're doing the street and...
You can. You would likely put common consumption areas over the plazas because they don't have traffic issues. Um, and what that would do is allow you guys, under common consumption, if we identified those places, to basically give permission for those to be used at a local level like that, rather than having to go get a state-issued liquor license for every time you go to do something there. That's where Topeka and Wichita use them over some different park areas that...
But there are perimeter controls.
Correct.
So what do you do? Yeah, it's a crawl, right? They want to go from one place to the next. They can't carry their drink with them there?
Well, so you can, but one of the big things is you have, you have to be able to blockade the area off. So how you use it and when is really a local level.
Do the streets have to be blocked off?
Yeah, you can't have moving vehicles and people wandering. So we see them commonly used in like a park place or, and that's the nice thing about our plazas, is they're not right-of-way. They're actually public space. So we can put common consumption areas there. Likely, we would not put one over all of downtown because we have so much moving traffic. It would be easier to get a special event temporary liquor license from the state for that. But some communities do that every Friday night. They want to close off their main street and have some kind of wine walk or something like that. That's how common consumption areas can be used. But you have to be willing to, to stop that traffic situation. So they're, they're a nice tool to be able to have in your toolbox.
And the permit divides the space.
Correct.
So if you want to put a stage underneath one of the over-hanging things and have the lights as your backdrop and your performer here, you could block the whole rest of the block to one side or the other and, and call that your, your beverage area.
Yes, probably under a temporary permit. I think the thing with a common consumption area is, as a community, we decide where they are ahead of time. So if we had a staged area and a park venue that we wanted to be able to sell beer at or have people bring their own alcohol, we would decide now and recognize what those commons consumption areas are. And then the choice to use those is based on when you want to use them. But traffic flow is a big part of it.
So common consumption area doesn't mean anybody can go drink in the plaza when they want. It has to be an association.
I know we have some that are drinking there.
But, but it's, so it's, it's, it's still fairly highly regulated and tied to an event of some sort.
And that's why I mentioned the perimeter controls. You can't just use that as your justification for drinking in the park.
So if I want to take my Bud Light on the bench outside Martinelli's, that's not something I can do.
Well, now, now there's a whole open container conversation to be had, but yeah.
So one of the things that has come up, well, um, from downtown stakeholders, we had this conversation with PD and I had this conversation with Clark Meislingel into last week, is open containers. Right now, if you're just sitting on the park bench with your Bud Light, um, there's not a lot PD can do just hav, having that beer open, right? I'm looking at Chief Morton.
Right. The ordinance is law is specific to consumption and not specific to possession of the open container. Unless you're in a vehicle on the street.
So you have to take the tenant.
And therefore, it creates problems relative to, of course, that we have to witness the violation. Or a business owner or somebody else can be a witness, but in, there are certain cases within the law as to when we can make a custodial arrest and when we can issue an NTA. And if we don't wit, witness it, in a misdemeanor case, uh, without some extenuating circumstances, you can't make a custodial arrest. Now, we could issue an NTA or request a warrant for the individual.
What's an NTA?
If we have a business owner, if somebody witnesses the event, but then they're the star witness when it goes to court because we didn't witness it. And so that can, has its own set of problems as individuals may not want to come and testify if we've issued an NTA or taking some sort of legal action at that point. So it makes it a lot easier because the Bud Light's sitting on the bench in front of Martinelli's, and if you have a picture of it, the first offense is gonna be, is how do you know what was in that container? I had water in it. And so there's more that goes into this than being able to prove this in a court of law than just having the, uh, container of beer. So it's a lot easier with the possession of the open container because when we get there, most of the time it's sitting on the bench next to them and it's open. We can smell it, it contains alcohol, we can collect it. And so it's, it makes it a lot easier for us to deal with those situations.
So, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, no, no. So, so we're looking at, it, it's switching to something that's gonna make that enforcement piece easier.
Yes. And so the question is right now, where, where does it live? So, and our hope was, we've got a little time between the next study session, and I've already been talking with Chief Morton that just between the two sections of code, both the overlay zone, which he's been part of the stakeholder committee through this last year, but it's time to kind of sit down and go, "Okay, let's make sure we're all on the same page about how do we enforce this? Does it seem reasonable now that we've, we see all these pictures together? And, and now that we have the draft alcohol code, how, how does that jive with everything?" It's, we, it's kind of like beta testing. We need to beta test some, some of our own permits that we've done in the last couple of years and then talk through that with PD and make sure that we're, how this is applicable. Because if you only want this open container issued to apply downtown, then it might make sense to put that language in the overlay zone chapter. But if you want this to apply through all of the city, does it belong in the new chapter five, or is there a better place in the new chapter five to single it out? So it's, I don't think anybody's against it, it's just where does it live and how do we best stay it?
Lauren, you've mentioned the stakeholder group a number of times, and I failed to relate to you a request to find out who the stakeholder group is. I'm not putting you on the spot now, but, uh, after this meeting, it must be good to...
Yeah, it's also on the city's website. If you go to our project page, um, which is available from the homepage, is also available from our department, uh, the stakeholder committee is listed there. And all of the meetings for that committee and all of their notes and recommendations on outcomes are also listed on that page.
I have a question, just thought of it. The River Festival, alcohol's allowed in the park. Is it allowed all the time or is that under some, a special event?
I'm gonna look at Shandy because she deals with a lot of those.
Consumption in, in, of CMV in that park is permissible.
Alcoholic liquor, I don't believe it.
Okay, CMV is permissible. Is six-point beer, beer CMV or still alcoholic liquor? It is confusing.
Yes, so that's where, when you look at our new code, and I think that's what everybody kind of has to think about is, we've been allowing CMV in. You would allow now what we call alcoholic liquor in, and that would allow people that have beer, yes, that means they'd also have vodka. I mean, so we, we just don't have these two choices. It's more of an all or none scenario now. There is no middle light option.
Well, and even when we did have a choice, you couldn't practically distinguish, you were trying to sort it out on the spot anyway. I mean, PD might have been able to read the can and put the bottom of it.
So we have one minute before public comment. I just kind of wanted to summarize session three. We're looking to be able to touch on manual, the application, um, any changes that have come across to the drafts based on the conversation that we're having with you at these study sessions, um, fee tables, and then implementation schedule. So, and I think that would cover a lot of those bases before we get to bringing the code in front of you, is being able to talk about what implementation looks like.
Would there be a chance to get that ahead of the meeting again?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I've really appreciated having these ahead of time.
Yeah, even if it's Friday instead of Thursday, if we just have it for the weekend, it might be unofficial.
Good, that's good to know. I appreciate that. Good to know.
And, uh, procedural question. You included some draft code with, uh, in, in the packet this week. Uh, do you want us to send comments to you, to you on that? Because, believe it or not, I've read most of it and, and thoroughly confused myself.
No, I, I really appreciate, uh, written comments. I just, and that kind of thing will then go in the project file, and so it's made available to the public if anybody wants copies of that. So, but I, I really appreciate written comments. It makes it much easier for us to address those, so I appreciate it.
Lauren, I, I think for the commissioner's benefit, since the question was asked about the steering committee, could the steering committee members who are here raise their hand?
They're not all here, but quite a good handful of them. One, Anna should raise her hand, and Brad, and me, and there's a handful that's here.
Quite a, quite a few. They were very engaged.
And then if your staff who does special events and you're here just for this meeting too.
Yes, your staff. Okay, well, thank you all for your input. Okay, it is, uh, three forty-five. It's, uh, time for open forum. Does anybody have anything they want to bring for?
In Topeka, we're discussing, the registrators are discussing the conduct of law enforcement, not only in this state but around the country. Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, at twelve oh five PM, I'm over here on Ash Street. One of your law enforcement vehicles made a U-turn in front of me. The vehicle I was in, we had to slam on our brakes to keep from hitting him. He never had his lights on or nothing. Why are we causing traffic accidents? Is he, was he in pursuit of somebody? He never turned his lights on until we got down the street. It was unit five eight two-three.
I wasn't taking notes fast enough, but catch me afterwards and I'll get that from you and see what you can figure out.
This is an ongoing issue around the whole US.
All I can, I'll try to solve it, that's all.
It's a bigger problem. But I just want you guys to like to know, I mean, the driver had to slam on his brakes.
Without speaking with the officer, I don't have an answer.
Any other comments?
I don't have to approach a podium, but...
No, no, just stand up. You're fine. We're here.
Uh, I just wanted to give you, um, a compliment for, uh, going on air on Cash Hollister's block party.
Oh.
Well, I, I, I wanted to...
He told me what to say, so I hope you like it.
Well, I thought it was a really good way to connect with the community and, uh, be on like a personal, human level. And I think the more that the commissioners can do that, I think the better the, the community.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, so if y'all want to do drops on the show.
Okay, anything else?
Can I ask a, actually, this is a question I got from a member of the public, and since I have my source right here, before he leaves, I want to grab it. Okay, um, and you may have given us this information before. It's regarding, um, yard waste carts. Are they going to be collected?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, they're gonna be collected. And then for the people that paid for them, they should not expect any refund of fees from the, whatever they paid for the cart initially, correct?
Yeah, they would have paid, they would have paid half the cost of the cart.
Okay.
And no, ma'am, they would not expect to be reimbursed. Should not expect.
I wouldn't put any people on the spot. Do you have a timeline on Lakewood ramp by chance?
Oh, yes, thanks.
It, that really depends on the lake level. I mean, we, we addressed the, the immediate issue on that. Uh, so it's back in place. Unfortunately, the, the access is still underwater.
Right.
So one is either gonna have to go down on its own, two, we're gonna have to get pumps from Martha, from, and, and start pumping it down again. Uh, we pumped it down, I believe, three times last year and with all the radio... We pumped it down, I believe, three times last year, and with all the radio, it was just a while here it came back up. So, that's kind of the issue we have right now. A timeline on it, I don't.
Thank you.
Okay, so everyone at four.